Welcome to our June 11 regular school board meeting. Right now we'll have our call to order, pledge, and moment of silence. When you're ready, Mrs. House, go ahead with the roll calls.
Mr. Brookhart. Dr. Faulkner.
Here.
Mr. Garman.
Here.
Dr. Green. Mr. Gregg.
Here.
Mr. Hoffman.
Here.
Mr. Reichardt.
Here.
Mr. Umbreak.
Here.
Mr. Reichardt Jr.
Here. 1.3 minutes. The board will take action to approve the meeting minutes from the May 7, 2025. Committee the whole meeting as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Dr. Faulkner.
Yes.
Mr. Garman.
Yes.
Mr. Gregg.
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Umbreak.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt Jr.
Yes. 1.4 minutes from the May 14 regular board meeting. Board will take action to approve the meeting minutes from the May 14, 2025, regular board meeting as presented. May I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Garman.
Yes.
Mr. Gregg.
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Umbreak.
Yes.
Dr. Faulkner.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt Jr.
Yes. Take us to Agenda Item 2, Board Administrative Announcements, 2.1, Board Recognition, and I'll turn that over to Dr. Need.
Thank you. Mr. Ryan, if you could move us forward two slides. This month, we are recognizing our spring sport teams and athletes that made it into district and state level play. So in our district level play, I'd like to congratulate the girls lacrosse team who made it to the district championship game, congratulate the boys baseball team who made it to the district championship game, and congratulate the boys tennis team who participated in district play with Colin Sowers and David Somers making it to the finals in doubles, and Nick Petrick and Nick Hand making it to the quarterfinals in doubles. If you advance to the next slide, we had quite a bit of district representation and state representation for both our girls' and boys track teams. So for our girls track and field teams, you will see there is a list of all of our female track athletes who placed at the girls' track and field district championships. So congratulations, just a great showing from our girls' track team. Like to specifically congratulate our four-by-800 relay team that placed first at districts and then went on to represent Danville Estates. That was a team of Janie Cotner, Amelia Grassi, Brenna Pasqual, and Odin Ryer, and they also got their season best time that day. And you'll see in hurdles, Giada placed third at the hurdles at districts but set a new school record that had been held by Michelle Duffy since 1989. So a long time she held that record, so congratulations to Giada, and she is a freshman. In fact, all of those girls I just named are either in the ninth or 10th grade, so we have a bright future for girls' track and field. If you go to the next slide, you'll see that boys' track and field also had a great showing at districts. So these are all of the folks that placed at the district championships. So again, quite a great showing for our boys' track and field team. So we also had state qualifiers at track and field. So Gavin Holcomb placed first at districts in the pole vault and beat his own school record. So he set a new school record here at Danville High School, and he set a district record in the pole vault that day. And Colin Geis earned fourth place in the javelin and was a state qualifier with his distance. Troy Ralp got first place in the discus and was a state qualifier for discus. Wyatt Essenwine was a state qualifier in the high jump with his second-place finish of six feet one inch. Our four-by-100 relay team placed sixth and had a state qualifying time, a team of Zach Conway, Skylar Simpson, Cole Harvey, and Gavin Cochrane. And in the 800, Wyatt Brady was a state qualifier. And then we had additional folks that placed at districts as well. If you go to the next slide, you'll see we also had success with boys' track and field at states. So Troy Ralp earned third place in the state in the discus. Colin Geis earned second place in the state in the javelin, and Gavin Holcomb earned first place. He's the state champion in the pole vault. Gavin has been a state medal winner his sophomore, junior, and senior year in pole vault, and he will be going on to pole vault at Columbia next year. Troy and Colin are both juniors, so we'll get to action again next year in track and field. So congratulations to our spring sport athletes. That takes us to 2.2.
Okay, so it'll take us to Item 2.2, Reports. First one up is CM AVTS. Think we really have anything? We have a meeting what, next Tuesday? No, they had a meeting, or they were supposed to have a contract meeting, what, on the 4th?
Last Wednesday.
And that got pretty much canceled. So they're not meeting until August to discuss their contract, as far as we know at this time. So I don't think there's gonna be a whole lot to go over next Tuesday, but we'll come in July if there's any new and exciting news. Anything from CSIU?
Well, we've got to put some, I'm not on the board anymore.
Okay.
I resigned from the board, and so we've got to fill that position with someone. I have talked to Sandy about it. I don't want to volunteer him when he's not here.
Okay.
But I think he's expressed some interest, so we need to just get another board member on there. I think you just point, right? Like, is it, it's not a voting item?
You do have the power as the board president to appoint. Not that you can't appoint Sandy when he's not here to say no, but if he wanted to wait till he's here to say no.
I'll reach out to him and just to clarify.
I think for the CSIU, though, we do have to vote. I usually have to send in to the CSIU how many votes.
Oh, for the person. I think we ultimately have to vote on all of those members, don't we? Like, isn't there that? But on this one, too.
No, I think what you guys did last week with the yellow sheets, that was voting for those members, right?
Yes.
But I think when we place somebody in there, she's always calling me, and I have to send her or something that says, "We had this many people vote yesterday."
I don't even remember what.
So July agenda.
I'd say so for July agenda, yeah. Why don't we put Sandy's name on? Yeah, I'll reach out to Sandy if he agrees to it. We'll put him on the July agenda to be voted upon then, to be our new CSIU rep. Does that work for everybody? EITC? Head Start?
Got two small reports here on Head Start. Head Start program had a specialist, Bridget Scott. She visited the program on May 28. She will be attending policy counseling and kindergarten transition night. It was the first time she will be visiting our program. Kindergarten transition is a community-wide event sponsored by Head Start. Parents and children entering kindergarten visit a classroom, have a snack, and in the classroom, and ride a school bus. Followed by, the end-of-the-year celebration was held on the last day of school. It was well attended with 81 out of 86, having at least one family member there. Local law enforcement presented six children with citizenship awards for being kind, willing to help others, following rules, and good attendance. All six children received a check for $25 and a certificate. I didn't get one.
Head Start did celebrate their 60th birthday.
Yes.
Party, which was wonderful.
PS Trust. That'll do it for reports, then. So we'll go to Item 3, which will be our superintendent's report, 3.1 enrollment report. Dr. Need.
You'll find your enrollment report in your board pocket, but just to see kind of numbers in front of you for the last few months, our enrollment numbers have stayed relatively steady like they tend to do. So those are where we ended the year in kindergarten through 5th grade. If you take us to the next slide, you'll see where we ended the year in 6 through 12, as well as at CM AVTS. And finally, if you'll go to the next slide, Mr. Ryan, you'll see our non-public enrollment report, and you can see that throughout the year. Those numbers also remaining relatively steady. And you can move forward to Administrator Board Reports. I'll start with Bobby telling us a little bit about the high school. As everybody knows, we have concluded the 24-25 school year. We'd certainly like to thank all of our teachers and staff and our students and families for an outstanding school year. So I think each person's just gonna share a kind of summary of a special moment or a thank you for the school year.
Yeah, so obviously, at the end of the year, there's a lot of different activities and culminating events that occurred, but I just wanted to, special thank you to Mr. Matthew Wolf for our commencement speech, and to April Zoo as our valedictorian, and Julian Harden as our salutatorian for this school year. But I also just want to thank, as Dr. Need said, our students and staff for just a great year, and especially our staff at the end of the year here. All of the events and all the things that culminated to graduation couldn't have been done without them. So I just really wanted to thank them.
Thank you.
If I could just comment on the graduation, because I was there, beautiful ceremony, everything went off without a hitch. The speeches were great. The student speeches were great, the keynote, I mean, it was, it was really, I love, I love it. I love it. It's such a cool experience, and it was clearly very well-planned, very well-organized, and solid all around.
So the middle school, you know, I'm gonna, excuse me, echo what Mr. Varholic just said, you know, a big thank you to really everyone. This will obviously be my last board report as a middle school principal, so I really want to take just this opportunity to thank, of course, the school board, you know, the students, community at large, parents, and of course, our excellent staff and teachers at the middle school. It's been a really great run for me at the middle school. It's not always been easy, but extremely fulfilling every year, and I'm really looking forward to the next chapter as I transition out to Liberty Valley and fill Dr. Reinert's shoes. So I just want to thank everyone for a great, quite a few years at the middle school. Thank you.
Dr. Snover.
Similar to Dr. Snover, I just wanted to thank the staff at Liberty Valley. We had a couple special moments together at the end of the year that I was able to personally thank all of them for everything that they did and all their hard work over the last two years that I spent there at Liberty Valley. Definitely bittersweet to leave. It's an amazing place, but I'm excited for Dr. Snover to get a chance to come out and just work his magic. So just again, just thank you to the parents, staff, the students, just everybody for just making Liberty Valley an amazing place to be.
And Ms. Wenrick and Mrs. Delgado.
I just wanted to echo what everybody's been saying. It's been absolutely tremendous year with our teachers and all the support staff for their tremendous amount of work that they give to the students each and every day. The amount of energy when you walk into the primary and high school is just absolutely unbelievable. My huge highlight came last week when I got to present the report on reading, that 50% of students entering 2nd grade needed intervention services, and by the end, they did not. So we decreased that amount of support needed by 50%, and that is just a huge shout-out to all that, all what the teachers do within their classroom with the Tier 1 and Tier 2 support, and then as well as our reading specialists and special education teachers offering additional support to those students. So that was my huge highlight. I was so incredibly impressed. So just thank you for all the hard work. I'd also like to take a moment to congratulate the class of 2025. As Dr. Faulkner said, it was an absolutely beautiful ceremony, and just, it's neat to see the students walk across and enter their next chapter, and just all the hopes and wishes that they get to achieve moving forward. So thank you.
So one of the highlights also from our department was the creation of the MTSS manual, K through 12, and it was a manual that we developed processes and procedures for all students K to 12 to look at the prevention and intervention needs in all areas, including academics, behavioral, social, emotional, mental health. And a huge thank you to the staff for kind of embracing that and moving forward with that process, and it's just gonna get better as we move on. So thank you to everybody, especially from my point of view, DM, the middle school, and Liberty Valley for, you know, just having patience and embracing the whole process.
I want to thank the board and my fellow administrators for the commitment that I think we all have to providing quality mental health services to the students in our district. I believe there's been a real culture change with our team, just their willingness to help each other out, to cover for each other, to make a, have a commitment to, you know, looking after the kids that are going from building to building, things like that. And a highlight would be when I met with Kathy Cashner from CMSU. She's their supervisor of crisis services, and when she said she never hears anything from Danville because of the great services you're providing, I mean, that was, that was great to hear. So thank you.
Thank you all so much. I just certainly like to thank the team, thank our staff, thank our teachers for an awesome 24-25 school year. We have also just hit the ground running this week, starting to get ready for the 25-26 school year. So we kind of don't miss a beat, and it's an awesome team to get to work with. That takes us to 4.1.
Oh, before we go to that, since Dr. Green came in, we backtrack for a second. Dr. Faulk-
Oh, yes.
Do I get to say no?
You got volunteered in your absence.
You call that volunteer. I wasn't gonna volunteer you, but Dr. Faulkner did offer, did offer that you would fill his shoes on this- I get to be his boss. That's what I want. You have to discuss those- I'm taking a job. You have to discuss- I'm taking a job there. You have to work out those details with him.
You might have the power to make his life difficult in this role. I don't know.
But he asked if you wanted to fill his position on the CSIU board. Oh, that's fine, but if-
Like, coming up when?
It's next week. It's okay.
It's okay to miss, and we'll put you on the agenda in July for a formal vote for that. That's one that needs a vote.
Okay.
You can't contain yourself.
I can. Okay, so now we can move forward to number 4, 4.1 Public Comment. Okay. No presentations and outside guests, no school property and supplies. So we'll go to number 7, Athletics and Activities, 7.1. Board will take action to approve athletics activities, Items 7.2 through 7.5. Yes. I just wanted, I mean, we didn't, I got, sort of distracted us, but at least I think most of the board members would agree. I want to say thank you to all you guys for all your efforts. I'll just be frank, this is the best. I've lived here for 13 years, and I'll be very honest with you, the administrative team, not this one, of course. So it's a pleasure to see you guys actually being as amazing as you guys are. So I just, we sort of let that go by because I sort of distracted, but I want to say thank you. And I'm glad we have all of you. Seriously, I think you're a great group. The district's going to get better. So, thank you. And I think the board probably echoes that.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, yep, for sure. Sorry, I didn't mean to slow down for so- Nope, you're fine. The board will take action to approve athletic items 7.2 through 7.5. Take a moment to look through them. If there's nothing you'd like to have removed to vote on separately, may I have a motion in a second, please? Second.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Gregg.
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Umbreak.
Yes.
Dr. Faulkner.
Yes.
Mr. Garman.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt Jr.
Yes. Nothing in Academic Affairs, which will take us to number 9, School Community Relations. Board will take action to approve the before and after-school care agreement between the DAC and Danville Area School District for the 25 through 28 school years as presented. Motion.
Second.
Mr. Gregg.
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Umbreak.
Yes.
Mr. Dr. Faulkner.
Yes.
Mr. Garman.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt Jr.
Yes. Take us to Item 10, Finance, 10-1, 10-2, 10-3, Reports. So we'll go to 10-4, which will be Bills for Payment, Senior's favorite part. Board will take action to approve the bills for payment from May 9, 2025 through June 3, 2025, as presented. Motion.
Second.
Mr. Hoffman.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Abstain.
Mr. Umbreak.
Yes.
Mr. Dr. Faulkner.
Yes.
Mr. Garman.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Gregg.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt Jr.
Abstain. 10-5, Finance Consent Items. Board will take action to approve finance items 10.6 through 10.18. Again, if there's anything you'd like to pull out to vote on separately, please speak now. You are satisfied with what you see in front of you. May I have a motion in a second? Motion.
Second.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Umbreak. Dr. Faulkner.
Yes.
Mr. Garman.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Gregg.
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt Jr.
Yes. Take us to 11, which will be Personnel Consent Items. The board will take action to approve personnel items 11.2 through 11.25, but we are going to remove one. Correct, Dr. Need.
Yes, we are gonna remove 11.8. That individual has rescinded their resignation, so we won't be voting on their resignation.
So I will go back through. The board will take action to approve personnel items 11.2 through 11.25 with the removal of 11.8. Motion.
Second.
Mr. Umbreak.
Yes.
Dr. Faulkner.
Yes.
Mr. Garman.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Gregg.
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt Jr.
Yes. I just want to say good luck to the teachers leaving the district, and welcome aboard to the new ones that are joining us. Wish the ones departing well. Take us to Item 12, Policies and Insurance, 12.1. Board will take action to approve the property liability inland marine crime, auto, umbrella, cyber, and workers' compensation insurance through the Seltzer Group at a cost of $261,161 as presented. Motion.
Second.
Dr. Faulkner.
Yes.
Mr. Garman.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Gregg.
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt. Mr. Reichert.
Yes.
Mr. Umbreak. Mr. Reichert Jr.
Yes. Nothing under thirteen for transportation. That'll take us to board concerns and items for next meeting agenda.
Are we doing a committee of the whole next month?
I do not believe we are. I believe we're doing one, one meeting, the voting meeting, the second week of July.
Second, yeah. Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. The second week of July would be the second...
That's the voting meeting, right, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, so it'll be July 9th. Will be our only meeting in July.
I'm sorry, the committee of the whole was the second.
Yes.
Not, not, not July 2nd, the second week, so it'll be July 9th, sorry. I'll specify, July 9th.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Because I thought we were.
Yep. So if there is no public comment, which I don't think there is, we will be adjourning to executive session for a contract conversation. And if nobody else has anything, again, everybody in administration, thank you for your hard work. Teachers, if you're out there, thank you for your hard work. For those of you who get a summer vacation, enjoy it, and we'll see you in July.
That may be the fastest meeting I've ever done.